Well, I guess we're it, so let's start. Maintenance Civic Center front steps. Issue from Ray.
So we looked into getting some quotes for the repairs of the front steps. There's chunks of cement missing. This happens probably every five years that we look at it. It wasn't included in our budget. So we're asking for up to $20,000 from the Civic Center Reserve to fix the front steps and also to refresh the vestibules you come in. So we would require a resolution.
Good idea.
Yeah, my only comment, and I do agree that we've got to fix our stuff. My only comment was since over the last month or so, you know, we've added the well net and we've added the steps and we're asking to spend $50,000 on the report to help us with the asset management program or whatever we call that thing. Like, and again, I'm just new, so I don't know what the finance. This is like lots of money in the bank. You can kind of deal with that stuff because we were pretty tough on our whole budget process.
Yeah, with this one here, because it's in the reserve, we've got the money, so to speak. So we're just spending the money. On the other ones, I'm not, I don't recall where we're getting the money from.
One was a gas tax or something.
Yeah, so the stuff that we have in reserve doesn't directly impact taxation because we've already saved for it, if that makes any sense. If we didn't have a reserve for it, then it impacts taxation.
It's pretty much a savings account.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I thought, but anyway, this, but when we, you know, we didn't, I guess we save it for these rainy day, forgot to fix this thing. Okay, no, that was my only comment.
That's where it comes from.
Wouldn't we, when we put out for the tenders and stuff, do we, are we going to like put some deadlines for when it needs to get done? Do they normally do that?
Generally, they put their time in when they're going to be doing it. Correct, yes.
Because I think it's important to get it done, but I'd like to see it done like
It needs to be cured.
In the summer versus September, they're trying, you know, the last
You kind of have a plan for the vestibule?
Yeah, we actually do. We want to pretty much clean out everything on that whole board where they have all the very dated boards. And when we were at the opening of the
Andre Brandt?
Yes, he had some beautiful murals that to me would really reflect our community in our town. And I think that would be ideal and opportune to put in there and showcase some local artists.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, resolution. Public Works additional garbage bin requests. So this, we got a request from?
Yeah, we had a request from the RMC Kelsey to put up another garbage bin in front of their establishment. As you can see from the attachments, there are several garbage bins in that area. These are fairly costly to the town. Westover at one point purchased their own and put it up in front of their building. So I believe at this time we have enough or our departments have felt that we have sufficient garbage cans there. And I wanted to talk to the RMC Kelsey to see is there a problem with the garbage or is it just you want something there? Because if there is a problem with the garbage not getting picked up, that's a whole other issue we'll deal with.
I know downtown, so by the Royal Bank and the TD, I don't think there's many in that corner, right?
No.
Because that's a corner that could have some, for sure. What do they cost when you say they're expensive?
I think they're like $1,500. They're not cheap because of the big cement.
Is there not a bunch of them sitting at Town to Town Garage?
There's some that are recycled ones.
I think there's one, one of the concrete ones, I think. There's a bunch of the recycled ones.
Sure, I thought I saw some here.
Something to check, see if there's anything at the Town Garage.
I think you're right, Andre, it would be good to ask them why because, you know, if they do have a problem, we should see what we can do to help them.
There's nothing in front of dominos and there's nothing in front, there's several in front of dominos.
Subway and dominoes up there.
Dominos, yeah.
And there's one of the Wombertian Roses here.
But if it's a matter of them not getting emptied, then that's a totally different issue that we need to do, to address.
But like I say, that Edward's in third area, there's some lacking.
I just wrote that to check that out.
So then we will talk to the RM and give actors? Place branding, issue sheet from the ACAHO.
So if you recall at our last meeting, it was discussed to bring them back to discuss place branding. They had given some dates. Counselor Atkinson, I know in an email earlier you had made some comment. I don't know if you want to provide additional information on the place branding.
The email that I sent yesterday?
Yeah, if you want to have further discussion on this.
Sure.
Because I do understand one of our larger issues was not exactly being happy with the
Logo. Well, the biggest, I brought that up. The biggest issue is they don't believe they've gotten feedback. So whether we don't like the logo or not, and I do, and I know Kerry sent us that summary, but the CDC and Jerome, Conity and the place branding guys that called me don't, are expecting feedback from us. So maybe we've got to give them if we don't like it, because we've decided we didn't like it, we should send them an email and say, we don't like it and we're not moving forward.
I'm confused with that.
Well, I talked to Linda Whitfield because it came on the CDC.
Those are the ladies who was here, one of the ladies who was here.
I don't know who was here because I wasn't at the meeting, Kerry, and I didn't meet with them at the West County either. So because I just started with the CDC, this came up at a CDC meeting. The information that I had was that there was confusion and I think there was even confusion at our meeting, the last meeting, over the logo because we thought that that would have to go on to our vehicles and all that. And that's not the intent of that. So the last time that I talked to her, because Al McGlaughlin called me as well, is they're waiting for a response from the Town of the Paw.
Like an official written response, I guess?
I have no idea. They just said they're just waiting for clear direction.
Because like I
And the options were represented, come with, have another session, but Travel Manitoba, they need to understand if they decide, they need decision makers of who's going to move forward. What else was there? You just need to do something, yeah, so. And so I was bringing forward the information.
Well, the three ladies were here. I'm trying to remember who was all here that afternoon when they did their presentation.
See, like the history of it is, and Randy, feel free to interrupt, is that previous members of council, previous mayor sat on this group or some people sat on this group and then they all, so basically the last council agreed to this, right?
Partially, yes, because it was a lot of, it was stakeholders in the community that they established a committee to also be on this place branding.
So the last group all agreed on it. Now, going forward, I believe OCN is okay with it and
The RM is okay with it.
Yeah, they're okay with it. So now we're the new council, so I'm not saying we can't say no to it, but they're just kind of like waiting, okay, like those other two groups, they're all okay with it. Now what, what are you guys doing? Because everyone else is kind of launching their stuff and they're kind of ahead of the game, so.
So when we met with them in January, or February 27th, but I have to think about this, right? We met with Bridgette and Colan, and Colan's the president and CEO, and Bridget Sandrin was senior VP. And we told them at that time, Bill was there, that we weren't opposed to the joint branding initiative, that we thought there was value in the three communities working together, but we had concern about the logo and that we basically left it there and that if they wanted to move forward, then somebody would have to move it forward, is basically where we were at.
I was under the understanding that since we had shared that also in December, that we were kind of iffy on that actual logo, that they were going to design a new one and they were going to bring it back to us. So that's where I'm kind of getting the confusion from as to why.
Well, I don't think that was, I don't think, that's not the impression I got from her. And again, I only talked to her for 20 minutes on the phone.
Anyway, I don't think she was at that lunch meeting. I think it was just these two people, Bridgette and Colan, right? I would assume they would.
So at the end of the day here, this benefits the town and us, right? So we need to make a decision to figure out, okay, fix the logo, come back to us and then we'll have another discussion. Or do you want them to come up? And the sooner the better because we're already, some of these other communities have already, you know, unveiled their new logo and everything else.
Right, our launch, our launch wasn't ever to be until 2020. Yeah, yeah, the launch was to be in 2020 for Town of the Paw.
Oh, there's a region. It's a regional thing, right?
Yeah. So
Flynn Flon's did theirs.
No, but it's for three, the
The three communities. So there, I think we're all in agreement that there's value in the There's value in the three communities working together, right? I think we're all in agreement in that. But we've had concern about the logo. So if Travel Manitoba wants to draw it, to design, I'm assuming they designed the previous logo? I don't know who designed it.
Well, from my understanding
It would be that group of people.
My understanding is that they hired a consultant that came in, met with a cross-section of people from the Paw, OCN and the RMC Kelsey. They did a workshop and they told everybody what it was all about and what the community and what the area was all about. These guys went away, created what they, a logo from what they heard and came back. And everybody sort of said, yeah, we're good to go.
Okay, and things changed, right?
Yeah.
So the current group doesn't seem to be too careful of the logo. So I guess Travel Manitoba would try to come up with a new logo?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that works. Like I know with Flynn Flon, with the launch that they did and the banners that they have hanging up in their community, like it wouldn't just be that logo that was designed by whomever designed it. Flynn Flon has, I've just seen them online, I haven't actually been there. But they have photos throughout their community, like there was Flinty and random people fishing and this kind of stuff. They're very nice, the banners are wonderful.
Yeah, their theme is wet and wild or something there.
Call it a wild or something?
No, wind and water.
Wind and water, wind and wild, yeah.
I guess the issue is, or not the issue, this is a three-party agreement that we can't just say we want a different logo without including the other people because this is a regional Travel Manitoba type of thing. So, you know, I think we would, I would guess that OCN and RM would want to be involved in a discussion again if we're changing what we agreed to or what the previous group had agreed to.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
So I guess this goes back to the original discussion is that they're willing to come up here again, I believe, and meet with everybody again to see if there's any way of landing this to a conclusion or do we have to go right back to the
I think we're, we're still all in favor with Andre. And I think that last meeting, didn't Chad say something? I can't remember, anyway, but yeah.
Yeah, I guess the only concern I would have, if these groups got together, it didn't sound like they kind of whipped together a symbol overnight and it sounded like they put a lot of work and effort into it. And I know we're a new council, whatever, and maybe there's all new over there. Maybe they don't like it either, but I would kind of say there's a little bit of risk we'll send if they were part of it. If I was on the council for two terms, I was part of it. Now all of a sudden, there's a new council and someone from another community next door, they didn't like the logo and I was part of it. And I spent a month or so meeting and going over it and there was volunteers from the community that were part of it as well, I'm assuming, right? It wasn't just, it wasn't just political figures, it was other people, correct?
If you could see on the July 19th, it says it was Alan Gibb, Jim Burshite, Gabe, Kim Valentine, Andre Brandt, Jerome, Crystal Morris as council, Lori Loughlin as council and Doug Lobstad.
Yeah. So, I don't know. I'm not big on logos, I whatever. To me, I don't mind the logo by whatever it is, so.
So I don't have a problem with meeting with Travel Manitoba and the three communities again to see if we can revisit the logo. As, so just from a pragmatic standpoint, there was an election and a new council was elected for the Town of the Paw, came up with a different idea. There is an election coming up with OCN in a couple of months, give or take. You may find a new chief in council has an entirely different viewpoint again. So I don't know if it's worth having that meeting prior to their election or after their election because we couldn't be in exactly the same boat as the Town of the Paw. So their election's August 20th, something like that, you know? So and it is summertime, so you know, people are busy. So if we scheduled a meeting for September, it probably would be a good idea.
One comment Linda did make is that out of all the place branding that's going on, this is the first time that a council was really got this involved in it, in the logo. I don't know what that, she said like that's, you know, typically what happens is they have these committees come together and then they just make the recommendation to go with it.
And that's fair, right? And my thoughts would be if we were going that path, that we shouldn't be involved in it at all. None of us, right? And it turned it over to a volunteer group who's going to run with it. If we're going to be a little bit involved, then we're into it up to our hips. So it's one or the other. So, okay, so a meeting after chief and council election sometime in September? You guys good with it? Yes, no?
So our last discussion will, will just trump that kind of thing because I think we were going to have a meeting with the RM and OCN with Chad, Larry and myself and Herb. So we'll just keep that same group together for September?
Yeah.
Sure, you guys, September, yeah.
I was to invite them up, that was the whole idea, yes. I had actually, part of the direction also was for me to contact the RM and OCN about their contribution. I did that probably a week and a half ago and I haven't received a response yet, but people are on holidays. So set sometime September?
After the election, yeah.
When is that election?
It's around the 20th of August, somewhere in there.
Oh, it's in August, yeah. Oh, okay.
Somewhere in that.
Are they three years or four years?
You know what, I think they're going two years this time.
Oh, nice.
I think they're going two years.
And they're not having vice chief or is that?
No, they're not having a vice chief this time. Okay, so we'll work on that, yes? All right, finance and admin, financial report. Issue sheet from the controller.
I don't know, Graham, if you want to bring anything forward? This was before levies were even included in here. You also have the April that came in today.
Yeah, I didn't have any April because I missed that, don't I? Yeah, this is just monthly financial for up till March. I don't know if there's anything exciting in there that blows your minds. I think it's pretty much on par with where we want to be. April is going to be much more of the same. I had it ready, but it's of April and May for your next one.
So Graham, I noticed where you've got percent of budget to the right there. So do you, do you keep, like you keep a good track month by month where we are in actuals compared to projected, like you, you know what I mean?
Within reason.
Within reason?
I mean, there's a lot out there. Try and keep an overall, big picture kind of view of it. I don't look at the detail that strongly because I would never be able to absorb that much data and come up with something. I try and look at the big picture. I look at more detail than this, this is just for you. But I think something like seven pages long and I'm trying to look at it, pick them and make small adjustments to make things balance.
Okay, so like we're, this is to the end of March?
This is the end of March. I have April done, I got that done today.
And how, how did you feel about it?
It's much of the same. Like it's pretty much on par. There's a few things that are a little bit lower, a little higher. Nothing that blows my mind away.
So you spend in a, in a even amount every year, every month? Or do you, is that, or do you have like a cash flow type of, you know, higher spends certain times?
No, what you're describing would be amazing, but we're not there.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Is that why?
I'm struggling just to give you something like this right now. And once, once we start catching ahead and get ahead, I can start making those tweaks to make it a little bit clearer. Like I already see things on here, I want to tweak a little more and more to the point where it becomes more and more valuable. But at least this gives you a good picture of where we're at in the year, you know, roughly how this is playing out so far based on where we should be. Not everything will ever always work out in a nice cash flow manner.
Is there anything you need from us to be able to do a better job with this stuff?
Again, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Again, it's like to master what I have before I start looking at other things. And I can work with what I have and like that's not an issue, it's
And I'm thinking more of the whole budgeting scenario, right? Because we're
We're behind with, we started with the budget, yeah. We'll start the budget earlier this year, hopefully.
Right, because we're going to be looking at 2020 real soon.
That would be ideal. So the earlier we start the budget, the less catch-up I have to do in that interim and that lets me continue and make these reports a lot more regular, so.
July, August and September, when we have the majority, we're spending because of the construction season and our tenders. And that's also in August when our taxes are due. So that's when our revenue is higher too.
Yeah, so right now I don't have any taxes booked because the budget was stalled at that point. I think until the end of May, so.
Good, so you're good with things, you're comfortable?
I'm comfortable with where things are right now. I don't think there's really anything to worry about. I think we're far from the course.
Good, thank you. Gas tax. That's still you.
This is just, there's a separate financial statement. It's the audited annual expenditures report that we're, we have to get audited by our auditor every year and we send it in after council approves it. This is the listing of expenses we have in the year. The auditor prepared the statement showing exactly this. I'm just looking for council approval so I can submit it.
And this is, these were the four expenses?
These were the four expenses, yeah.
Pretty easy audit. Okay, resolution coming forward. Alrighty, mobile sign zoning bylaw letter petition.
So we have a letter petition here as it comes forward for some of the people that have signs on their properties right now. Our bylaw currently states that you have to move them every 30 days. We have a lot of businesses in town that have the exact same sign advertising their property. We're asking for this to kind of be held in advance until we have our bylaw done. Because every 30 days they would have to move that mobile sign. So we're asking if we can just, this one particular time until we pass our zoning bylaw that is going to be revised, that we can permit them to stay longer than 30 days.
Why was the bylaw created in the first place?
It was basically to ensure that we didn't have derelict signs all over, that there was a process for putting the signs up, that we were limiting the amount of signs that go on properties.
When, when was it written?
Oh, it would have been probably your first bylaws.
Like in 1970?
Yeah, it's probably 30 years old or at least 25 years old, the bylaw.
For mobile signs? I thought, actually, I thought somebody was saying it was earlier than that.
It's all part of our zoning, yeah. So it would have been when the town had their zoning bylaws, so probably 30 years.
This originally came up because someone complained about something, correct?
What had happened is there were signs that were going all over the place and someone had complained saying, you're not following your own bylaws. So we started enforcing the 30 days, every 30 days, making the move signage.
So what do we expect to come out of the bylaw review or whatever?
We would expect that this isn't going to be the process at all anymore. That if you have a sign on your property, as long as you keep it in good shape, why would we make people move their sign if they're advertising their business?
Unless we didn't want to have these type of neon signs placed all over the community and your downtown and all that other sort of stuff, right? Because that's what could potentially happen.
Yeah, that's why you're setting a process with it. But again, the ones that are the biggest concern are, say, the, I'm going to use for an example, the Paw motel. They advertise their, their business on their own property, on their own sign. We also have Fat Boys, they advertise their special on their own sign, on their own property. Yet the way our existing bylaw tells us is they have to move that sign every 30 days.
Yeah, and for the record, I have one and I don't care, I'll take it down. It's a passenger vehicle.
It does become, some get a repair and some of them do have the potential to have several in one spot and it's very distracting. We've had that complaint. So when the zoning bylaw does come forward for council review, that is one aspect that we are changing.
The Rotary Club has that great big one on our property too for the bill paddock. Yep, that great big one. Okay, so the zoning, so okay, so is this a pressing concern?
It is because we've been told to enforce our bylaws. We're telling people we have to move the signs.
The new bylaws that are coming down, is there a section in there, a draft section in there that pertains to this?
Yeah.
Could we see it?
Yeah, we can bring that back.
Okay, and let's have a look at the draft. Because then there's an assumption this is where we're heading. Okay, everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
So in the meantime, just hold it in the veins? Just don't deal with it right now?
Yeah, bring, let's get the
Draft section.
Draft section up to our next meeting and that's only a couple of weeks away.
Okay.
So what did you say that the dots in the zoning?
It's in the Town of Paw zoning bylaw.
Were you looking for it, Andre?
Yeah, that's what I was just looking for. We can move on, I was just
I can send sections of that bylaw to council tomorrow.
I just always have a hard time finding it, that's all.
Okay, Cattle Infrastructure Program, issue sheet from the curator.
This is an application that they're making for, hang on here, yes. This is for having the exterior brick work repaired on the building. And they have asked us to consider making application with them by passing a resolution to authorize the grant application. However, the project is $67,000. And when I spoke with Graham, we didn't have this in the 2019 budget and the reserve fund for the museum only has $42,000. Also, in saying that, they would require a resolution that would, because the town is the owner of the asset, we would have to pass a resolution that would give them permission to carry on with the actual application and carrying out of the work. What Graham had recommended is maybe contacting or them contacting Destination Marketing or coming up with the ultimate funding for the balance of that. So they're going to be short.
So they're applying for a $67,000 grant?
Correct. That's, that's our portion.
So basically, when they, the brick work needs, we need someone to come up who's an expert in brick work, assess the entire project, put a plan together and that is going to cost Well, now, now the upside is if you go through this way and then you get the project, then they could potentially pay for, you know, a vast majority of the brickwork that's going to be done. So you pay upfront, I guess, for the, to get the project assessed. But then they could, you could be reaping the benefits later on if they pay. I don't know, the last history is pay in terms of the percentage that they pay for the entire project, I don't know, but. So this is a project, I believe I brought up a couple, at least a couple of times from my report back from the museum, that the brickwork will need to be addressed. You know, I'm a brick expert, but sometime soon.
It was my understanding this was for the brickwork?
That's what I mean, I said, that's what I'm saying. The brickwork will need to be, I brought it up before, that the brickwork needs, will need some addressing.
This was also shared when we did the tour of the museum.
Right, sharing and told that.
Okay, so is the $67,000 to repair the brickwork?
No, no, it's to get someone to come up.
And just assess it?
Do a full assessment and, yeah. Now, whether or not, and I don't know the if some of that money goes towards the project in terms of an amount, we could find out more, but I believe the majority of it is just to get someone to come up and assess it.
Based on her issue sheet, it does say to have the exterior brickwork repaired on the building and that they would require a resolution to prove the work and confirmation of contributing up to $67,000 towards the project.
Yeah, that's where I'm confused.
So after, if we were, if, however it goes, then do they apply for a grant to do it? After the assessment's done?
They can, but if they don't get the grant, we're still on the hook for $67,000 as we're at. And they have $42,000.
So there's $25,000 short.
What I would probably recommend is that they secure other funding or council book in their own budget and see if they're going to cover that additional $25,000.
Because the issue is, is no one knows what it's going to cost. Because no one's, there's nobody around that's an expert in the type of brickwork that was done. So she's got somebody, some friend or somebody to go and look and he's like, I have no idea of what it's going to cost because he's not really an expert in that type of whatever, however the brickwork is done, I have no idea, but.
Is this time sensitive?
I think it would be fairly time sensitive. I think we need to have this settled by the next two weeks here.
Well, okay, because I don't know You folks, but I'm just a bit confused. The more I read this, the more confused I get. Because I understand what Trevor is saying, but it seems like her but it seems like her, her issue sheet is saying something else to me. Because when I read it, um, the first two lines write, "To have the exterior brickwork repaired on the building." "From the Town of Apau, we would require a resolution to approve the work and confirmation of contributing up to $67,000 towards this project." Uh, if it's for an assessment of the work that needs to be done, shouldn't it say that?
I believe it's for the work to be done.
That seems like a significant amount of money for an assessment.
Yeah.
But I, but I think it's, for our contribution, it is for the assessment and maybe work towards the project, but it's not gonna cost $67,000 to do the project. If this is gonna cost, like, significant amount of money. So what I'm saying is, is that I think that the amount of money, and this is where there's gonna be, we're not exactly sure, is that for, get someone to come up, and then to our portion, it is going to be based on what the entire portion's gonna be, because I think the grant works, and I'm an expert on it, 20 whatever.
Forty percent for
Yes, percentages. So she's saying that 67 will probably be the majority of it. If the guy comes up and says, no, all I gotta do is this, this, and this, and it's gonna cost 100 grand in total, well then obviously our 67 grand is not going to be 67, it'll be much less than that. That was my understanding of how it's going to work. But I, I see where you're coming from in terms of it looks like the 67 grand is going to come up and fix it all.
Can I make a financial recommendation?
Try it.
Of that 42,000 we have in the reserve, why can't we just pay for the assessment, assuming it's under 40,000? And then when the grant application goes in, you can reassess the percentage and how much money you have at that time? Because it just becomes a non-issue.
Yeah.
Or why don't we, I mean, I don't know Why don't we do this, why don't we clarify with Shereen tomorrow, and then send an email out to everybody, and then we can all roll down it tomorrow? I guess, I don't know if everyone's okay with that.
I, I don't think that follows the letter of the law, though, that lady from Winnipeg said.
Yeah.
So, um, if it's not super, super time sensitive, we meet again in two weeks, why don't we even ask Shereen to come and present? And then we can get some clarification?
And if we require a, a resolution that evening, we can put this on our regular council agenda under an unfinished business, so that we could pass a resolution that evening.
Okay.
We can still have the discussion as an unfinished business.
Let's do that. And we're following the rules.
See, we didn't talk about it in length, this was on the agenda for our last meeting, and we didn't have the forum, and we didn't get to talk about any of that stuff, so.
See, and you have a little more inside information, because you were kind of there.
Yeah, we were just, like, we've talked about it a little bit every meeting kind of thing, but
Okay. Yeah, there's a mosquito, yeah. All right, payroll and accounts, disbursement report.
So we would require a resolution for pay periods 13 and 14 in the amount of 236, 514, 46. General checks in the amount of 199, 834, 85. EFTs in the amount of 116, 715, 03, for a total of 553, 064, 34. We would also require a resolution for checking conflict in the amount of 1298, 39, for Northern Building. In here, you'll see there was almost $10,000 to Cloverdale, Cloverdale Paint, and that was to do our line painting and our curving, obtaining that paint. Um, $8,850 for floor core, and that's inventory for couplings. $18,000 Pardon me?
What's that, couplings?
There was couplings for, um, some of the repairs we had. I believe we talked about hydrants.
No, it's the waters.
The water, okay, so, yes. I'm confusing with the other hydrant tender. Um, we also have 18, 375 to AMM, that's for our town fuel and some supplies. And Wolsey in the amount of 78, 37, again, for more supplies for water. These were pretty basic. These were just some new distributors that I thought I would bring forward.
Pulse Fitness, Wallace, sir?
Um, that was a piece of equipment, I believe.
Is Wolsey part of your buying group? Is it part of that buying group?
No, Wolsey's in it.
I know who Wolsey is. They're, they're part of my buying group, but I'm wondering if they're part of the Town of Apau's buying group?
The incline back extension, it was for hip.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was all sorts of equipment, sorry, I'm still back on that one.
Are they part of that group?
What buying group?
Well, there's that buying
The AMM buying group.
Yeah, yeah.
It would have been through
Are they in there? No?
The invoice would have been through AMM.
There's not much in there, but, um
Building aren't in my buying group, they're one of my vendors, that's what we should have
Any other questions on this stuff, you guys?
Richard Bedard, who's here?
Richard Bedard?
Airport.
Bedard.
Is that the electrician?
Airport, uh, consultant.
Airport consultant, that's right. Okay, EFTs are, as per usual. That Manitoba Hydro, is that our bill for a month?
For all facilities.
Oh, that's enough, too, right?
How much is it?
Just under 40 grand.
40?
Yeah. Okay, so everybody's good? Resolutional, yeah? All right, ACAP.
This was some information we received from Original Community Airports of Canada. They're a national organization that lobby the government to increase ACAP funding. And what they've done is requested input from municipalities that do utilize the ACAP funding to look at any kind of an increase. There's been a lack of funding since 2000, and they have not really had any kind of extra appropriation of funds. So we would like a resolution that would, uh, basically increase the ACAP funding in order to keep pace with the aging infrastructure, and to increase it from 38 million a year to 95 million with a commitment to reevaluate funding every five years. As you can see, again, from year 2000 to now, to not have any increases, the infrastructure is aging very quickly. We've been very fortunate to utilize money from there, but it's a big pool of money for all airports to get, so it's a little bit of a harder competition.
Does ACAP get their funding through the fuel, fuel tax?
I'm not sure. I think that's a federal government I'll check into that, though.
Just curious, but I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't support them, try to get more money? Benefit us downstream?
Yeah.
Okay, so resolution? Uh, new business next meeting. I, I wonder if we could, um, I, I would just like to talk about the, um, the boat inspection station at Clearwater Lake. If, it's kind of a joke, and I would just like to have an official position on it. So if we could, you guys know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
What do you mean by, I guess, me?
Yeah, okay. Anybody else got anything for next meeting?
Uh, no, just got something from this meeting back in, uh, should be on your personnel. Um, if I offended Mr. Gibb during, uh, the committee, the whole meeting on June 24th, it certainly wasn't my intent, so therefore I'm apologizing to him for whatever I did.
Thank you. Um, I think we have a couple things for in camera. I don't think there's gonna be any business come out of the trial, so, uh, we'll get home another. So resolve that?
Did you guys talk about the civic center steps?
Yep, yeah, we're saying, you missed it. So resolve that?
Yeah.
So resolve that, but now we'll move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee of all with Mayor Jakes and the chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.